Welcome, everybody, to the Carteret County Board of Education meeting for April 5th of 2022. I'm sure everybody is exhausted from staying up last night and watching the Carolina game, except for the state fans who all went to bed at nine o'clock. So, I hope you all enjoyed that game. Congratulations to the Tar Heels and the Duke for making it as far as they did. We're moving forward now. I'm going to ask Reverend Goodwin to do a invocation for us, but before we do that, when we stand, we're going to do a moment of silence for our student that we lost tragically at Croatan High School last week. It breaks my heart. All these kids are like kids to me, and it breaks my heart. So, if y'all will stand, do the moment of silence, and then Reverend Goodwin will do the invocation.
Father, you are the great impartor of wisdom. Please impart some of that upon all of us this evening. Be with each one here as we express our views, our thoughts, even our prayers, and may we do everything with one express purpose of making this school system as good as it can be. We seek your guidance in our Lord's name. Amen.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Mary Ellington with Newport will lead the pledge, and your students, are they here?
Tonight, I have, yep, Chloe O'Neil, second grade, and Mason Quillen from fifth grade.
Wonderful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, y'all.
Thank you.
I don't know where I got these awesome little pins for y'all. Watch out for the TV.
Yeah.
That's a, Mr. Mason, this is for you, mate. Are we going to do pictures?
Yes, always.
Come on, boy.
We always do pictures.
This is for you, and you gotta hold that up like that, and we're gonna face her, okay? And this one's for you. You did great that one.
Good job, Dad.
All right, and y'all come stand right here, and we'll smile as we're there first.
Why am I here?
I'm stepping you up in front.
Okay, all three, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank y'all. So now, I am going to ask Dr. Jackson to recognize the Boys and Girls Club Coastal Plains Youth of the Year.
Thank you. Cece, if you want to come forward, we are extremely excited, board members, to reintroduce you to Cece. She has been here. She has been just absolutely phenomenal throughout her high school career in lots of areas, both athletic and academic, and has been recognized. She won the 2022 Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plains Youth of the Year Award, along with the 2022 Beaufort Teen Center Youth of the Award, Youth of the Year Award, and the 2022 Dwayne Reynolds Region Three Youth of the Year Award at a ceremony on the campus of East Carolina in February. She also won a $3,000 scholarship from the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plains. She's in the running now for the state title in High Point, and if she wins there, then there's a competition in Atlanta. And knowing Cece, I'm sure that there are still many wins for her ahead of her. She recently earned a track and field scholarship, and last I heard, planning to go to UNCW in the fall. And so, congratulations, Cece. We're extremely proud.
Here we go. Remember the picture.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. I've been told that the whole indoor track team at Croatan High School may be here, but I've got Assistant Principal Chris Davis here, and we're going to recognize the track team. Or maybe it's just him.
So, really quick, as they come in, I just want to say a huge thank you to the board for recognizing them and Dr. Jackson. We have a great group of athletes here. Not only are they great athletes, obviously, they're state champions, but they're great in the classroom, they're great role models on campus, and a lot of that goes to our coaches. We have Coach Beaufort, Rico, Coach Stevens, Coach Ramsey, and Coach Wallace. They're all great examples. They do a great job training our athletes and helping them be great examples, and we couldn't be prouder of them at Croatan. So, thank you.
Maybe just stand up where you are.
Stand back for this one. Great group of them.
Like you like each other.
Ready? On three. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
And our boys team is also state champions. I think they're filtering in a different way. There's too many of them to come down one hall.
You've run a few state champions through here this year.
Yeah.
Let's do that again next year.
I'm just looking forward to spitting the spring into our outdoor track, because there's 80 of them.
Oh, good.
Yep. Bring them on.
Here's the new freshman. Yeah, that's it.
Hey, guys. Come on up here, kind of round. Face the young lady with the camera.
They'll tune in. Again, this is another great group of athletes, great examples here on campus. I forgot to introduce our team captains, Colton Rodriguez for our boys team, Navios for our girls team.
We're not even in here. A beautiful picture. On three. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Good job, y'all.
I see you.
Good job, y'all. Howdy, y'all.
Congratulations.
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 All right. All right, moving right along, I've got Ms. Chrissy Probst, who is going to recognize the state finalist for Presidential Award in Math and Science Teaching.
Good evening. I have Susan Merrill with me. She has been a teacher for sixteen, or in education for 16 years, and 14 years at Morehead Elementary. She's fifth-grade science teacher, and she was recently named one of the three state finalists for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. And so, now she moves on to the national level, where one of those three will be a recipient. So, very proud.
That's awesome.
You can see you this time. Congratulations.
Okay, moving right along, I've got two proclamations I'm going to read. The first one is the Month of Military Child proclamation. Whereas since 1886, the Department of Defense has designated April as the month of the military child, recognizing the courage of military children. And whereas the month of the military child is an opportunity to remember children's roles in strengthening the military family. And whereas, living in different states and countries, and often moving numerous times, military children face unique challenges many other youth do not experience. And whereas, 24% of the students who attend Carteret County Public School System are declared as military dependents. And whereas, many of the parents and guardians of our students work at area military bases. And whereas, every single school in the Carteret County Public School System has been awarded the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's Purple Star Award for service to military-connected families. And whereas, the Carteret County Public School System strives to provide a safe and nurturing educational environment for all children with additional support for military children. Now, therefore, we as the Carteret County Board of Education hereby proclaim April as the month of the military child, and April 8th as Purple Up Day, a day to wear purple to show support for military children. I'm looking for a motion to approve this proclamation.
I'm moved.
I've got a motion by Ms. Wheatley. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second by Mr. McLean. All in favor, raise your right hand. Good job. Very good. Next proclamation is School Library Month. Whereas April 2022 has been designated the 37th Annual National School Library Month. And whereas, school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge. And whereas, school libraries provide materials that will develop literary, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards. And whereas, school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure. And whereas, school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs of varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas, school libraries are a fun place for students to go, and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Carteret County Board of Education and the Carteret County Superintendent of Schools declares the month of April 2022 a School Library Month, and thereby urge each of Carteret County schools to adopt a similar resolution. I'm looking for a motion to adopt April as the School Library Month.
Make that motion.
Ms. Statler has made the motion, and Mr. Day has seconded it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Both proclamations passed with flying colors. That is wonderful. Thank y'all. And now, moving forward, I am looking for a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Wonderful. Reverend Goodwin has made the motion to approve it, and Mr. McLean has seconded it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Meeting agenda has been approved. I'll now read my green sheet, which may take a little while, but it's got to be done. It is now time for public comment. Anyone present tonight wishing to make comments should have filled out a request to speak public comment form. To ensure civility, relevance, and time management, there are specific requirements for public comments set forth in school board policy. They include: Comments are limited to matters pertaining to public education. The speaker shall state his or her name at the beginning of his or her comment. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per person. A three-minute timer will appear on the TV screens in the bottom corner. The timer will beep when there are 30 seconds remaining. It will then beep a final time when your time is up. For civility and decorum, no speaker shall make obscene remarks or issue personal attacks or insults. No complaint against a school employee or student will be permitted, although this may be heard in closed session at a later date following consultation with the superintendent. Much information about individual students, including a speaker's own child, is confidential under state and federal law, and we discourage and often prohibit such information in open session. The chairperson may immediately terminate any comments that violate these rules. Board members will not respond to questions, except occasionally to request clarification. With that introduction, our first speaker tonight is Deanna Hayden.
Hello. I know y'all are all used to me talking about MAST, so I'm going to be all over the place on many subjects, okay? First of all, it's been a huge help for my kid, but I'm gonna let him speak his piece in a minute. I kudos to everybody that got recognized tonight. It's kind of funny that you recognize people without a school aspect of it, but you have yet to recognize Skills USA. I know for a fact I've been here five times, and each time, people are like, you know, we need to recognize them, and y'all still have not recognized the winners from Skills USA last year. You guys sit here and say that you're here to promote the kids. Skills USA is the trade school kids that you guys say you're here to help, and you're not even recognizing them, but you're going to tell me that you care about them. That school's doing it. And the only ones that beat the kids in Skills USA in this county, because there was one at West and one at East also, were kids from early college high schools, okay? Skills USA is trades. That's what that school is doing, is trades kids, and you guys don't even recognize them. It's sad. And I've been here five times begging y'all to recognize those Skills USA kids. The other thing, on a different subject, talking about recognition, is, again, you're recognizing all these athletes, and then for the sports teams, do you know that only one athlete gets to be the scholar-athlete? But y'all care about education. Why not recognize all the scholar-athletes on the team? Not one. Team of 75 kids, and only one kid gets to be the scholar-athlete? One. One. It's kind of sad. It's really kind of sad about where y'all put your priorities and how you put them. And then speaking about MAST High School is only for a elite few, well, I'm going to use the ROTC program at West, because if you do a class size by the amount of kids that are in the ROTC program at West, it's equivalent. And only one high school out of the four has an ROTC program. One. And you're talking about the population in ROTC to one class at MAST, probably even the entire school at MAST, and you keep saying that it's only helping a few. There's one school, there's one program that's thriving. I highly support ROTC. Wanted my kid to go in ROTC, but didn't have it at Croatan. You sit here, and you're talking about what should be important, and you're telling us that you care about the kids' future, but you're not doing it. You're recognizing athletes. That's great. I got an athlete. She should have been here tonight, but she's in class, okay? She chooses class over coming here and getting recognized. These kids are working hard at MAST. They're thriving, and I just can't wait until you hear, well, I don't know, I have no idea what he's gonna say. But I can't be more proud of my kid than he is. He struggles, and he has worked hard.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hayden. Next up, we've got Mr. Riz Hayden.
All right. I feel like I'm a pretty easy person when it comes to stuff like this. Easier than most. About the whole closing a MAST thing is kind of stupid in my mind. I'm sure all you want, your kids go to college, and it's expensive, no doubt. You know what I mean? I did not want to go to college at all for the sole fact of I hate going to school. I don't want to do it for another four years to get a piece of paper. Simple as that. But if I could further my education in four years, I have to be in school. You know, you can't do anything without your diploma. That's stupid, you know? Why not do what I can, while I'm still in high school, to be better myself in the long run? You know what I mean? I'd say that MAST's helped me out quite a bit. Right now, I work at Bug Auto Sales, pretty local shop. I make way too much money for the hell what I am, but for everything that I know and the certifications that I've got through the MAST program, it's amazing. I've got my welding certifications, my automotive, and my diesel certifications. I already have a job set up at Caterpillar for when I graduate high school, and that's full benefits, everything. There's not much more you can ask for. I just don't see why there's a purpose to close anything like that when you can get, I mean, I didn't even do, I did the least of all those programs. I just did certifications. You know, you can go through and get an AA in all those programs and be way better off. You know what I mean? And I'm here, I mean, I'll tote them whole certifications, and I'm getting this, and I can only imagine what some other people could do if they took it to its fullest extent, you know, and grab more out of the program. But you can't tell me y'all's kids don't want to go to college. I mean, I'd call you out on a lie if you told me you didn't want your kid to go to college, you know what I mean? And for you to want to close down a high school that offers college classes just like dual enrollment, I mean, literally, it's just, it's stupid. That's all it is. You know what I mean? I don't see why you wouldn't support that. Instead of having to pay for it at the end, why don't you put your tax money using, you know? Somebody's got to pay for it, you know? It's ridiculous. That's all I got to say. I guess cut a little short, but that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayden. Next up, we've got Ms. Dana Mole.
Hello again. It continues to surprise me that how the state of North Carolina has over 100 innovative and early college high schools, yet Carteret County is still the only county continuously trying to close this school. Many have stood here telling you the positives that the school has achieved over the past three years. It seems to be clear in our minds of why this type of school should exist in our county. Let's start with the fact that the school already exists. All the time spent, many hours, lots of money to get the application process going, to get the school started, staffed, and the students there was not an easy task. Our commissioners, our taxpayers, everyone involved has paid large amounts of money to start and continue the school. Now, the reoccurring funds are there. Lots and lots of mistakes have been made, but the good news is, you guys have the ability to change that. Do we need to make sure the students are evenly distributed across the county so it doesn't pool from too many students from one school? You guys have the ability to do that. Does the focus need to be skill and trade and other occupations that Carteret County needs, like welders, mechanics, and nurses? You guys have the ability to do that. You can shift and adjust to make the school what it needs to be. Don't just give up and close it now because of the mistakes that have been made. Look at all the amazing things that these students have accomplished, even with the uncertainty of whether their school would continue. Just think of what great things could happen if we all got behind it and continued to support it. Do you need to educate the other high school principals, staff, and general public what the point of this school is and why it exists? Yes, absolutely you do. There is so much misinformation out there. Time is spent explaining the college and career promise, and only a small percentage of high schoolers qualify for that. That same effort should be spent to educate people on MAST. We have amazing schools here in Carteret County. MAST is not here to replace any of those, nor is it needed to. They are all stellar in their own ways. We are blessed, and we, but we cannot stay content and sit back and do nothing to improve. Early college and innovative high schools are not for everyone, but that doesn't mean that our counties should not have the choice. Why close it and start again in a few years when people realize that it was needed? You have done this work so far to get it to where it is. Now, it's time to admit your mistakes and make it right. You have the power to do that. You can shift and adjust as needed rather than just give up. One size doesn't fit all in education. Parents and students of Carteret County deserve the choice and this type of high school. School is here. The funds are here. You have the power to continue to allow it. You have the power to make the necessary changes. Please, let's keep this school as a choice for upcoming students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mole. Next up, we've got Darby, I believe this is Foner.
Hello, I'm Darby Foner. I'm a senior at MAST, and this is my team. We are the only robotics team in this county, and we are actually going to our state competition this weekend. And we started this team back before COVID happened, and we were cut short halfway through our season due to COVID. And that, along with not much funding and only having five kids on our team versus a team of 40 kids, we had a lot of odds against us. But in our last competition, we actually made it to quarterfinals, and the competition before that, we placed fifth of all the teams. before that, we placed fifth of all the teams. And the thing with this program or this team is that we're based out of Mast. We're based at the community college. And while we do have plans to branch out and kind of get kids from other schools in the program, there's not much chance of that if Mast closes. And we're also hoping to get the FLL and FTC teams up, which are for the younger grades. So if Mast closes, we're not going to have much of a shot at this, and not only are we going to lose Mast, but we're going to have this opportunity for all the grade levels just completely ruined. And that's pretty much all I need to say.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Good job. Next up, we've got Eugene Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eugene Thompson, and I have two students at Mast in their junior class, and I have a student at Newport Middle School in the eighth grade. I'm here to support a Mast. It's a worthwhile education, it's innovative education that needs to continue for Carteret County. We need this. I was recently at a meeting at West Carteret for my son for Scholastic Leadership Academy, where the speaker more than once said Carteret County is behind other schools such as Charlotte-Mecklenburg when our kids apply to college. So Mast gives us a leg up because they already have college experience. We can't keep putting our kids behind because we're a less populated county than most of the state. We have to keep our kids going. We have to lift our kids up. We do that by supplying them with Mast and giving them that chance. Yes, our high schools have, you know, AP classes, honor classes, but that's not always enough. We need to give our kids an advantage and not just saying if it came down to a kid from Charlotte-Mecklenburg County Schools or Carteret County and the college is looking at it, well, he had more opportunity at Charlotte-Mecklenburg, he's got to be a better student. Let's not deprive our students of the opportunity. Mast gives an opportunity. Some of these kids that go to Mast never thought of going beyond high school. They go to Mast, and now they want to go beyond. They want to do more, more education. Some of these kids would not even be successful in an ordinary high school, but they are at Mast because of the detention that they get. We have to keep this program going. Now, before, we've always said, or y'all have said, funding. The funding is there. The state has given us the funds. Let's keep it going. My son, James, he would love to go to Mast if he had the opportunity. Yes, he can go to West and go in the SLA program and do well. My daughters have done well at Mast. They've had challenges in some of the college classes, and, you know, it's going to keep going. My wife recently attended a meeting at West Carteret for the Newport Middle School PAC team, and at that meeting, as she came home and told me, it was mentioned more than once, the county only has three high schools. No, it doesn't. It has four, and we need support all four of them. I appreciate the time to talk to you. Let's do the right thing, and let's keep Mast open and give other kids the opportunity that the two classes that are there have had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we've got Ms. C.C. Johnson.
My name is Latitia Johnson. I go by C.C., and I'm a senior at Mast Early College. The mission of Carteret County Public Schools is to graduate students prepared to be productive citizens, followed by your vision and commitment to ensure every student is provided with an individualized set of supports and services to graduate and become successful adults engaged in the community. Mast Early College has benefited me personally by supporting the mission and vision of our school system. I've excelled tremendously academically and remaining competitive when applying to colleges. As of this week, I have been awarded over $100,000 in scholarships and grants between seven colleges and universities. I have also accepted... I was also accepted into UNCW Honors College. Although I excel athletically, my priority has always been my education. I believe Mast is the best option for me when I was faced with the possibility of not playing sports in high school. I am thankful that I continue my studies at Mast because I'll be graduating from Carteret Community College next month with an associate degree. I'm a member of all three honor societies. I also serve as president of Sigma Delta Kappa English Honor Society. Not to mention, I still have five years of eligibility as a track and field athlete, although I have over 70 college credits. This would not have been possible in a traditional school setting. Please consider all the future students who would benefit significantly from Mast instead of dropping out of school because they don't see another option. One size does not fit all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And last on our list, we've got Ms. Emily Thompson.
I'm Emily Thompson, and I am a junior at Mast. Mast has benefited me because at least every semester I've taken at least one college class. That can earn me my associate's degree. Would I have gotten opportunities to take college classes at West where I would have gone? Yes. Would I have been able to take all the credits I have? Probably not. And your issue three years ago when you were closing the school was funding. I've looked it up. It's in the budget, recurring every year. That's the issue. Why are we... It's there. Also, it's given so many other students opportunities. I'm in a society for leadership and success, an honor society at the college. Not many other high school students have that. Also, the three high school things, there's actually four. I don't know how many people in the county know that. There's Mast as well. There's also the fact that every time I tell somebody what school I go to and how the fact that it's closing, they say, I'm sorry you have to deal with that. Nobody should be told that there's... People are sorry that their school's closing. There's 84 students at Mast. At this point, there should be 200. That doesn't happen because you guys have closed it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, we will now look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I've got Mr. McLean with a motion.
Second.
I've got a second by Ms. Wheatley. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Now moving to Mr. Blair Probst.
Good evening, board. As you can hear from my voice, I was one of the individuals that did not go to the bed at 8 o'clock last night. So I apologize in advance. I was heavily involved in the game, so I apologize. The second read policies, these policies come from the North Carolina School Board Association's Fall 2022 Update Packet. These policy revisions reflect changes in federal and state laws, judicial precedents, and mandates from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Some were edited for clarification, editorial changes. A number of the policies were revised to reflect recommendations from the North Carolina Council for the Interstate Compact and new statutes regarding students of military families. There was one policy that was revised since first read. Mr. Whitford added an additional language to Policy 5030, that's community use of facilities. The language was added that school facilities would not be approved for activities that advocate imminent violence or, in addition, are closely associated with documented violence against specific groups of people on account of race, religion, or ethnicity. I think that is pretty self-explanatory. And that's all the information of note for second read. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any thoughts, questions? Mr. Probst? All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the policies for second read as presented.
Mr. McLean has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reverend Gillen has made a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Great job, Mr. Probst.
Thank you.
I think you're still up.
For first read, these policies also come from the same packet, update packet. Again, the revisions reflect changes in federal and state laws, judicial precedents, and mandates from Department of Public Instruction. Some were edited for clarification, editorial changes. The only revision of note that comes out of this group is Policy 9000. That's planning to address facility needs. There is the omission of ascendance in the second to the last clause, and it says all professional contracts must be approved by the board. I bring that to your attention not to say that that changes anything because it merely reflects the consistent language in Policy 6420, which establishes the superintendent can approve contracts up to a certain dollar amount as determined by the board in that policy, and that policy's been approved for a while. So I think the board, excuse me, School Board Association wanted to make those two policies growing.
Any questions or thoughts to Mr. Probst? Very good. That's pretty easy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Probst.
Moving on, now we are going to have a board discussion of Mast. Everybody want to open this discussion?
I will, I think. I was one of three who were tasked by our chair to talk about Mast. I was on the outside. Our idea was to have an open mind. I must admit, as we began the process, I was leaning toward trying to figure out a way to keep it alive. We met with a lot of people. We met with the high school principals. We met with some of our county commissioners. We had Dr. Manzini, the president of the community college, meet with us. We had the PAC chair, Ms. Mole, with us. We had our CTE coordinator, and we had the principal of Mast. As a result of all of that input that we received, I would like to make a resolution. May I? This is only a... This is a resolution to order a study on the question of closing Mast after the graduation of the class of 2023. Whereas Marine and Science Technology Early College High School, or Mast, was open for the 2018-2019 school year, and whereas the state of North Carolina failed to fund its share of operating costs for the first two years of operation, and whereas there was an expectation the school would be filled with vocational technical students, but it's always been questioned whether or not that expectation was reached, and whereas enrollment has been complicated by the uncertainties about the future of the school, and whereas it is abundantly clear that Mast is much loved by the students and parents involved, and whereas the Carteret County Board of Education has the responsibility to consider the welfare of all students and the efficiency of the expenditure of tax dollars, and whereas there has been previous consideration to closing Mast, and whereas a statute providing for the closure of traditional schools does not or may not apply to cooperative innovative high schools, but that following the statute will inform the board on the question of closing Mast. Therefore, be it resolved by the Carteret County Board of Education as follows. The superintendent of Carteret County Schools is instructed to conduct a thorough study on Mast and the question of closing Mast after the graduation of the class of 2023. The superintendent may designate members of his staff to prepare all or part of this study. This study is to be prepared as soon as practical. Number three, the study will have in mind primarily the welfare of the students to be affected by the proposed closing, and geographic conditions, anticipated increase or decrease in school enrollment, inconvenience or hardship that might result to the pupils to be affected by such closing, the cost of providing additional school facilities in the event of such closing. Number four, the study should, to the extent practical, consider whether similar programs can be offered at our traditional high schools in the sentiment of the county commissioners on the closing of Mast and the sentiment of Carteret Community College. The study may include any other information the superintendent would like to present on this subject. A public hearing on the question of closing Mast after the graduation of the class of 2023 is called for the Board of Education's regular June 2022 meeting, now scheduled for June 7, 2022. The superintendent will cause notice of the public hearing to be advertised. Number seven, until the question is determined, a freshman class at Mast will not be enrolled for the upcoming school year. However, students will be permitted to transfer into the class of 2023. This the fifth day of April 2022.
Thank you. We've had a resolution read. Do I have a motion on this resolution?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Mr. McLean has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I would like to say something first, or after a second?
After a second.
Go for it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Day has made a second. Now we will open this up for discussion. Ms. Adler, you're welcome.
Thank you. I don't think it's coming as a shock that I have something to say. I think I've spent a long time waiting for this meeting and knowing it was coming and thinking of how the future of Mast would look. I will say, when recurring funding hit, I went back and watched the March 2021 meeting where four members said the only issue with Mast was funding. So I thought for a second that there was a chance that we'd continue this. I think it's important to know that we haven't talked about this. This has never been a discussion. The three people on the committee have talked, but we have no idea. I have no idea what principal said, commissioner said. Absolutely no clue. Clearly, the future is not promising unless this is about to go a very different way. I want it to be really clear to the students here that this is nothing to do with you guys. It's nothing to do with the students that occupy this building, and it's everything to do with this board, and I'm included on that. I think we have successes as a board and we have failures as a board. When we're looking at respecting a tax dollar, I think it's important to note that over 1.7 million has been spent for 90 students to go to that school. That's 20,000 a student. So I don't think saying respecting the tax dollar, at this point, I feel like that's a void argument. To the students that will graduate this year, I hope you don't look back, or next year, that you don't look back on your high school and remember lawsuits and crying at board meetings defending your school. I hope you remember that you guys stood for something that you thought was really important, that you linked arms with people, and even with pushback from other students, other schools, board members, teachers, staff, that you guys fought for something that was important to you, and no one can take that from you or your accomplishments. As far as the board, I hope we use this as a learning experience to move slowly, thoughtfully, and with intent moving forward, because this could have absolutely been avoided. And I point fingers again at no one. I think that's everyone. We haven't looked at what this school could look like that I know of. You guys may have. We haven't looked at what it could be. I don't think it takes away from our other schools. We have amazing high schools, and I'm so thankful that we have amazing high schools, no matter where your child is going to go. So I would support a pause in a reorganization of Mast, but I'm not going to vote in favor of a study of closure.
Very good. Any other comments or thoughts? All right. I guess we will now take a vote on this motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. We are six to one, so it moves. Moving right along, we will have Ms. Kathy Carswell come up to consider budget revision number four.
Budget revision number four includes a state revision and a special revenue revision. When we adopted the budget originally, that was based on a planning allotment because the state had still not adopted the budget. So this state revision is to align the planning allotment with the initial allotment. And the majority of these increases is due to the state mandated benefit increases. That would be the 2.5% increase for teacher salaries. That would be the increase in retirement and increase in hospitalization. So the state revision totals $3,864,380. The special revenue fund is where we appropriate our funds, like for grants in CPK. And so this is a grant that we received from the Beaufort Food and Wine to help with tutoring at Beaufort Elementary, Beaufort Middle, and East Carteret High School. And the amount of this revision is $34,900. And the amount of this revision is $34,998.35. Any questions?
Any questions, anybody? Fantastic. Now, I get, we'll have to consider, we will need a motion for this revision.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tawick has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, my Mr. McLean. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Carswell.
Thank you.
Great job, as usual.
Thank you.
Next, we have got a, we're going to have an update from Bubba, Travis, and Katie about the Croatan High School feeder meeting.
So, Travis and I, we have this new format where we go out to the high schools and all the feeder schools meet in, and we get feedback. It's a little more intimate than the big setting where everybody here speaks, and there, there was some, if I recall correctly, there were some concerns maybe about some overcrowding down that way, which we all know about. Lot of praise for our teachers and staff. I personally like the smaller, more intimate setting, but it was mainly positive feedback, unless y'all have something to add.
No, I think it was a lot of questions about stuff that was happening with bond projects at each school and just kind of clarification on when and how, capital projects versus bonds, but all really positive.
Perfect. Great report, y'all. Thank you. Next up, we get to consider face covering requirements. Not going to have any kind of presentation, so I need a motion to not have face covering.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Day has made a motion to not have face coverings. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Adler has a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Thank y'all. All right. Now is the time to talk about Board of Trustees at the Community College. As you are aware, the Carteret County Board of Education is responsible for appointing four people to the Carteret County, Carteret Community College Board of Trustees. These are four-year appointments. The following individuals are currently serving on the CCC Board of Trustees' Board of Education appointments. Dr. Matt Zettel term to expire June 30, 2022. Mr. William Bill Henderson term to expire June 30, 2023. Mr. Robin Comer term to expire June 30, 2024. And Ms. Catherine Parker term to expire June 30, 2025. The Board of Education will be asked at its June 7, 2022, meeting to appoint a person for the term that ends June 30, 2026. Board of Education will follow the procedure of advertising. For that reason, I am announcing tonight at the April 5, 2022 Board of Education meeting that letters of interest are due to the superintendent's office to my attention by 5:00 p.m. on the first Tuesday of May, which will be May 3, 2022. Moving on, we will now receive an update on capital and bond projects from Mr. Richie Paylor.
Good evening, Board. It's getting late in the year, so capital projects are kind of winding down, so I don't have any new news for capital projects. The painting continues, but it's getting down to the final stages. Playground equipment's been ordered, chillers have been ordered, so there's no new projects that we hadn't talked about. As far as the bond goes, we received bid openings on March 29, which was last week, for the White Oak Elementary School gym, and we're in the process of reviewing those bids right now. Croatan will be next out. Those plans are ready, and we're just reviewing those before we put them out to bid. Any questions?
Good job, Mr. Paylor. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now receive some comments from Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, and good evening, Board members. I'd like to first acknowledge and welcome my colleague, friend, and an incredible professional, Dr. Tracy Mancini, the president of Carteret Community College. We appreciate her presence here tonight. I appreciate her partnership. Dr. Mancini and I were asked to address a joint convening of all the superintendents and all the community college presidents in the state to share with our colleagues across the state the incredible work that many in our school system, at the college, and our education foundation have been involved in, in the creation of the Big Rock Teaching Fellow Scholarship. And so, we're very excited about that. We've had a lot of feedback from others across the state who are looking to duplicate that effort, which is awesome. We look forward to having Big Rock Teaching Fellow Scholars teaching in our school system. The application for the first round has, the application deadline has come and gone, and that committee will be doing those interviews, and so, we very much appreciate. Dr. Mancini, appreciate having the opportunity to stand next to somebody very smart, as we presented to lots of folks. I'd like to share again, April is National Month of the Military Child, it's School Library Month, and World Autism Month. I'm also excited to share that this month, our Purple Update, our Purple Up Day for military children will be celebrated on this Friday, April 8, and Public School Volunteer Week will be celebrated a week early, the week of April 11 through the 15, because of our spring break. National Student Leadership Week is April 24 through the 30, and Administrative Professionals' Day is April 27. This week is National Assistant Principal Week. We're incredibly blessed by the outstanding and dedicated educational leaders who serve as assistant principals in our school system. They literally exist to serve all around them. Though sometimes working behind the scenes, our schools would not operate as smoothly, nor would students and staff be as successful as they are without the efforts of our assistant principals. We're asking everyone to join us and thanking them individually and as a group this week for their outstanding service. We appreciate all of the sponsors and donors for the Carteret County Public School Foundation Gala that was on March 10. I understand that approximately $50,000 in donations and silent auction bids was raised to support the Big Rock Teaching Fellow Scholarship and the Student and Staff Assistance Fund. This past, past month, our middle school and high school bands were assessed as part of the North Carolina Music Educators Association Music Performance Assessment, or NPAs. I'm proud to share that on a five-point scale, 11 of our 13 middle and high school bands scored at the superior or highest level, while two of our middle school bands received an excellent or the second highest level score. For the first time, all three of our high school bands performed grade six music, which is the most difficult grade, played mostly by collegiate bands, and again, were scored at the highest level. Additionally, our high school choral programs were assessed as part of the NCMEA Music Performance Assessment, again, NPA. Every single one of our advanced choirs at each of our high schools scored at the superior or highest level. I'm blown away by the level of musicianship and talent displayed by our band and choral students and greatly appreciate the incredible choral and band directors who support them. If we're truly to be an excellent school system, we should see excellence permeate our school system in every school and in all facets of our work. I believe these band and choral scores are another indicator of excellence throughout our school system. Finally, I would share that as we enter our final two months of school, I could not be more proud of our students, teachers, administrators, and staff members who've worked so very hard throughout all of the challenges and shifting protocols to continue to excel academically, artistically, and athletically this year. We have been, we are, and we will remain Carteret Strong. Mr. Chair, this concludes my comments for the month.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Do I have any board members who would like to put out any thoughts or comments?
I would, just briefly. I wanted to recognize the Mass Robotics team that Darby got up to speak about. The Mass students have been through more than most high school students have to go through, and I think there's five or six of them, two or three from Mast, and they qualified against students that have, she said, 40 people on a team, have a $250,000 budget in a lot of cases, and I think it's a Mr. Dineley that works at the community college that's their mentor or is coaching them along, and so, I'd like to recognize him. But it's really, really impressive what they've done, so they need to be recognized.
Very good. Any other comments or thoughts? All right. I just want to tell my fellow board members how much I appreciate y'all. You know, I know it's hard for Katie to get up here and say what she does, but I respect and appreciate your conviction. You know, the neat thing about this board is that we don't always agree, but everybody, in my opinion, on this board is thoughtful in how they go about things. We have had a tumultuous, to say the least, 18 months to two years as board members, but we have worked well as a team, and I appreciate that. So, thank you for speaking your mind, and I respect that. So, the next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will take place Tuesday, May 3, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting will be broadcast live on our YouTube channel. And with that said, I need a motion to take us into closed session.
For the stated reason, Mr. Chairman.
The stated reason will be Reverend Gilwin.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11, parentheses, a close parenthesis, parentheses, six close parenthesis. I married an English teacher.
Second. I've got a motion by Reverend Gilwin and a second by Mr. McLean. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. We're in closed session. Thank y'all.
Where are we doing this?
Right here.
Right here.
Thank you.
Looking very busy.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.